Okay, I'll call order tonight's meeting of the Pottstown Borough Council. Would you please rise for an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag? Oh God, would you grant this body the knowledge, the wisdom, and the courage to do what is best for this borough? Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the interior of our republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a roll call.
Counselor Kirkland. Counselor Culp.
Present.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Counselor Paez.
Here.
Counselor Proxell.
Here.
President Wynn.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Very good. Subcommittee reports, infrastructure, counselor Culp.
Yes, we had our meeting on the 18th of February, and we talked about the Borough Hall building here. It needs some paint repaired on this roof. The borough, new Borough Garage, needs additional work to roof and entryways. Closed-loop project has been delayed yet again. I guess we're going to be talking about that. Major water break at Burke Street was repaired. Carousel plans and permit applications being done in phases, licensing and inspection. And the first informational, educational community meetings will begin on March, in March 1st. The first one will be rental and registration compliance, and it will be in the Borough Council Room from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 30th. And Parks and Rec supplying for community block grants to cover the cost of replacing the roof and HAB units at the Ricketts Center. And work to reinforce the Manitony Creek Bridge is scheduled to begin next week or shortly. And there's a design for the bike shelter to be built on a pad at the Manitony Green. And there's pretty many parks and recreation youth programs that are very successful so far, so that was for infrastructure.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one, sorry.
Please.
About the Manitony Creek Bridge, so that's the King Street and High Street?
No, this is, the bridge is inside the park.
Okay.
That they're doing some work to.
Okay, I have one. Is there any chance of looking into adding solar to the roof of Borough Hall?
Dog.
Any grants out there for us?
You're a kid.
Can we look at it next month?
Sure, there are a number of grants for alternative energy. It does come down to the match and the return on your investment.
Right.
Capital. So, yes, there are grants out there. We can look at that for Borough facilities. Short move, however.
Thank you.
We are in the process of upgrading all the lights that we did in this building and the parking lot.
Okay.
Was that for the new facility or this building as well?
This building.
And how about the new facility?
It's already there.
It's already there? Oh, great.
Okay. Question?
No.
Okay. B is economic development, manager Batdorf?
Thank you. I wanted to bring counsel up to speed with a new program that the county has just put into effect. This is the Montgomery County 2040 Implementation Grant Program. I attended a training yesterday evening. The grant program is being offered to all municipalities and townships in Montgomery County for efforts that are implementing the comprehensive plan by the county. The three themes of that are connected communities, sustainable places, and vibrant economy. As part of this new program, it's similar to their former revitalization grant program, which you may be familiar with. We did some projects in the downtown and at the Steel River Playhouse, many different things. And really what this is focusing on is capital improvements, land acquisition, bricks-and-mortar type projects. Ineligible projects as part of this program are going to be things like maintenance, design, engineering, that sort of thing. It will be, the application will be going live April 1st of this year, and it will be, they will be accepting that, these applications actually every month on a rolling competitive basis, which is new. It's different for the county, but they really want to get as many projects, good projects that are ready to go in front of them as possible. The maximum amount you can apply for is $200,000. What we need to keep in mind is that this is competitive, and the county has $1 million allocated per year. So, we have, we have a lot of projects, I think, in the county, and specifically, especially for Pottstown, that I think would be eligible moving forward. But I did want to make you aware of that program, and we'll be looking into that and eligible projects moving forward. There is a match involved. It's 20% match, but you can use a combination of different sources, engineering, that kind of thing. A lot of projects require that just to get, you know, really off their, off the feet. So, I want to make you aware of that program. And secondly, grants administrator Courtney High attended the Tri-County Sustainability Symposium last Friday, the 4th. Pottstown was selected to present on our sustainability plan along with Sheldonham, and just described the status of our plan, and it was a nice opportunity for Borough to talk about that. And lastly, the community development efforts of CARES and the Rock the Block program through Habitat for Humanity are progressing very nicely. April 15th will be the large-scale community cleanup event, and specific repair projects as well in the target area that we're looking at for Habitat, which includes Walnut Street, Beach Street, and Franklin Street in the borough, and CARES looking at the parks and adding some trees and different things to spruce up the borough for the spring. We're seeking volunteers right now, so if you're interested, please contact me, and I will help facilitate that process and put people into project teams. We are having volunteers from the community, all sorts of organizations, the school district, Hill School, Montgomery County Community College, so it's really going to be a big day. We are hoping for good weather. We will have, we will, we're really trying not to have a rain date, but we're talking about it. We'll have to continue with our planning and decide on that, but it is going to be a large effort. And also, there is going to be an opportunity for organizations to have a table, an informational table at Chestnut Street Park, which will be sort of our, our ground zero, if you will, for that day, and we'll have our, we'll have the ability for organizations to set up tables and provide information. You'll have a really big audience, and they'll be right there in the core neighborhood to have that opportunity. So, a lot of things happening. Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Batdorf? Okay. Economic, C, transportation, counselor Culp again.
Um, yes, we had a meeting in February that we interviewed for consultants for, we had to do this as a, I think it's the government expects us to do this, to interview these consultants for our airport. And we just, they, they all, they all gave us very good programs that they wanted to show us and the things they could do. We decided on the Delta Group again, which we will discuss later on in our meeting. And we also, Fly Elite is interested in taking over the mechanical hangar, and that is something else we're going to discuss. So, we had a kind of a busy month, and I guess next month we discussed transit and that. And Eastwood is also interested in a car show at the airport, and that's something else that's going to come up in discussions.
Great. Any questions? D, the Ricketts Center, counselor Kirkland.
Yeah. They have, they want me to announce that they have tennis on Mondays, 5:30 to 6:30. They have a hip-hop dance Tuesdays and Thursdays, 6:00 to 7:30. Soccer for Success, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, 6:00 to 7:30. They have a drama and acting class sponsored by the Steel River Playhouse, and at that location on Wednesdays during this month. Coming during the summer, they will have summer camp, and they'll also have teen basketball tournament. For more information on those, please stop by the center or call 484-945-1020.
Okay.
And there is a fundraiser event that Counselor Miller will be talking about shortly afterward.
Great. Any questions?
I just have one request. Actually, the individuals that donated the Tower Garden, the affiliates from the Juice Plus Parent Corporation have also made a commitment to have a consistent presence in addition to just dropping off their gift, which I think is very honorable. And I was wondering possibly, Counselor Kirkland, if you could include some feedback from those who are coming in and, you know, just briefly let us know what kind of things they're doing in addition to uphold their own end of the commitment that they've made. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have an announcement for the Oliver Boys and Girls Club, Ricketts Community Center. They're doing their annual fundraising Kiss Macy the Pig contest that will be held May 25th at the Crown Plaza in Reading. If you all know our friend Franz Kraselkovich, he's an upper Pottsgrove Township Commissioner. He's been entered in this contest. I have a very special interest in watching him kiss the pig, so we want to raise as much money as possible. And all the money that Franz raises stays right here in the borough of Pottstown to support our community center.
Good.
And I have fundraising envelopes for anybody that's interested.
Great. Thank you. Pottstown School Board, do we have Kurt Heidel? If not, do we have Dennis Arms?
So, Mr. Heidel isn't here because the school board is currently conducting their superintendent search, and they're in their first round of interviews with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And the only update I have is, I saw a lot of you at the WIZ this weekend. Opening night, we had filled about 700 seats for the first night. I was there selling tickets, so I'm sure you saw me went off really well. Community loved it, kids loved it, so that's all I have. Next year will be Little Shop of Horrors.
Ad-hoc zoning and animal committee, Vice President Miller.
Nothing on animal, and the February meeting for zoning was canceled, and we meet again Tuesday, March 15th for zoning.
Very good. Safety, Chief Drumheller.
I start by saying that the police department is currently working with the Pottstown School District because we're working on the protocol for active shooter. I suspect in the next couple of weeks, not soon a month, that we will go up and do a drill and work with them on that. So, we've been working hand-in-hand with them. We've been going to their meetings, and they, or I know they've already done the teacher notifications and stuff like that, so we're at that point. Also, just for the counselors, traffic studies, if you have any, please let us know. We have the equipment to do them. We just recently did one in 600 Block of Farmington Avenue at the curve there. Actually, believe it or not, we clocked over 25,000 cars, and we found out that 35 of them we could have issued a ticket for. So, obviously, there's not really a speed problem up there, but I know Councilman Arms talked about Charlotte around West Street, and we're going to take a look at that. So, if you have any places that you know would benefit from a speed study, just please let us know. The next thing I want to talk about is, we talked to Councilman Arms about a project, he actually came up with the idea, it's a great idea. It's called an exchange zone, where we create an area of safety at Borough Hall for people who exchanged their children, who threw a court order, also anybody who buys something online and they're looking for a place to meet somebody safely. We would, we would offer, the police station offers that security. So, we're going to be working on that within the next month, come up with a sign and an area. I know I've been talking to Borough Manager Flanders about it, and we are going to come up with a game plan for that to work. I think that's an excellent idea. South Street, this has been more tedious than I ever imagined it would be. And we're at a point where we've sent the team out basically going door-to-door. So, I suspect we should have this concluded for you and have results by April, by April's meeting. And right now, I can't even guess which way it's going to go yet, so. Also, I wanted to talk to you basically about the Pottstown Criterion Bike Race. That's the downtown bike race that you approved. We've been working with Dawn Gillick, and we've been meeting with her once a month. Obviously, my biggest concern for that is the community and the notification that we're going to do for them. We will try our best, but I assure you, you'll probably hear something about that race because we'll be blocking off a lot of roads, but I think it's going to turn out to be a very decent event. For those who don't know, March 16th at the Montgomery County Community College West Campus in the community room, we are having the Montgomery County Youth Summit, and basically it's students and cops all in a room, and we get to share some ideas on, like what irritates us and what irritates them. And it's designed to tear down some walls between the two factions and get them to understand each other just a little bit better. I think it's going to be an interesting day. For those who don't know, we closed the substation, and I've been working with Borough Manager Flanders and Steve Bamford to try and identify a location for a new substation. I would hopefully be able to come back to you maybe in the middle of the year or towards the end of the year with an identified place and a game plan for a substation. Obviously, a substation's a very vital part of the organization, and the nice thing about it is the officers can frequent the community and basically be in and out of the community and have a presence there besides just responding from Borough Hall. Let's see, what else have they got? And the last thing I also wanted to talk to you about was, and this is for Councilman Kirkland, if you haven't had a chance to read the news today, they, I told you when you took a, and you took a lot of grief over the fire in the Rosedale section. And I told you, I said, have faith in your police department, we're going to bring this job in. And we most definitely did, and the person we brought in is not going to be around this community for eight to 17 years. So, I told you to have faith in us, and I didn't disappoint you. Okay. And that's my safety report.
Good.
Chief Drumheller, while you're here, that's me. I'd like to talk about a few things that we've discussed recently, one of them being the, the children that are left at the bus stop.
Correct.
You know, there are children from time to time that are left at the bus stop after school, and these children have to complete the entire circuit of the drive, return back to their home, and if there's no one there to pick them up at that time, they're brought to the police station, and then the, the department becomes their caregiver.
Correct.
They're turned over to our charge, and this is basically a gratis type of arrangement at this point. And it can also lead to a charge of neglect. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I just wanted the community to understand, and also just for an awareness that the school district may update their policy to make it an awareness issue and that there, you know, there are some consequences. I don't know how it can be put softly in the, in the manual, but I just wanted to say that, you know, go on the record. And additionally, there are charges at daycares when you exceed the time limit. So, from door-to-door, the school is responsible. Once we're responsible, there is an actual cost. Can you review some of those costs that are actually incurred outside of even the additional gas that's used on the run, but once we take over?
Okay. Can do. But you are correct. There are days where we're not only the police, but we're also the babysitter.
And at daycares, after a certain time, there's a charge of $1 per minute. Is anybody familiar with that? I've never had any children in daycare, but I'm familiar with a lot of different daycares and their policies. When they are closed, they begin to charge a dollar a minute. And so, maybe before we get to the charge stage of neglect, we could recruit some of the loss or some of the actual costs, even if it's only marginally. So, that would be something of a consideration between the department as well as the school district.
I certainly am willing to have that discussion with the school district, too.
Okay. And the second issue was regarding this public drop-off, and I had this question as well. I saw your person, and then I had somebody talking to me about it online. And is there any additional liabilities that we incur in an insurance capacity if there's an event in that safe zone? Are we, are we held harmless?
The thing that we want to use, the word we want to use is exchange zone, because safe zone projects that we are guaranteeing that you can come in there and be safe. And that's not necessarily true, as you much understand, that police can't guarantee everybody's safety. But what I would suggest is that it would offer no more or less liability than we already occur, that we already incur by doing our job.
Okay. But I think it's an important caveat that the public understands that you can't ensure the safety. So, calling it an exchange zone opens up the broad understanding, and you explaining it and us talking about it lets them know that in the event that there is something tragic that does go on, it's not that someone dropped the ball on, you know, surveillance or, you know, we do have cameras almost everywhere, so people should be mindful of that, but not everybody is. But I just wanted to bring that issue up, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to add that the new fire truck went into construction, and it's going to be delivered by the end of June, beginning of July at the latest.
Next, we're going to have the mayor's report, and I want to alert everybody to the fact that I have moved the mayor's report and the manager's report to the committee of the whole meeting so that we can consider what was stated in their reports and perhaps act on Monday night in a voting meeting. So, we'll start with Madam Mayor.
Thank you, President Wynn. First of all, I'd like to just say, you know, and thank our police department for the wonderful job that they do, and describe the, the twofold nature of what they're actually doing. Number one is, they're responsible for enforcement of the law to keep the peace. So, they're reacting and responding to things that have violated the law and broken the peace in the community, such things as drug activity, domestic violence, crime in general, the list goes on. The other angle, we kind of touched on, quality of life concerns, for example, interfacing with school students that have been left at the bus stop. Also, the redirecting those victims of domestic violence and even the perpetrators with the anger management issues that may be needed for the backend of their concerns. These are all quality of life issues that affect our community, and I'd just like to say that these are things that the police department also handles. But I'm going to let you know that with warm weather, and we're right in the middle of it, it's typically bringing out the best, the best for parties, gatherings, cookouts, weddings, and of course, people are traveling around a little bit more, whether it's on foot, on bike, running, or in their cars. And there are more children moving about at play in unusual places with restricted, with restricted movement. You know, some children are playing in streets, they're playing in alleys, and they're playing on the sidewalk. So, I'm just asking the drivers in particular to reduce their speeds within the borough. I know it's posted at 25, and I know that everyone wants a stop sign at every intersection so that it can be a little more safe, but that's just not feasible. So, I'm just asking for people to be a little more responsible in understanding the way to avoid accidents is to slow down. The way to avoid damage to your car and damage to other property is to slow down as well as pay attention. And I'm asking parents to impress the importance of safely crossing the streets, whether we're walking or jogging. You know, I've said this before, but it increases with good weather that people want to take a walk with their headphones on. And when they're walking with their headphones on, sometimes they're crossing streets while the driver has to right away on a green light, and they haven't turned their head one way or the other. So, these aren't, these are ways that the public has to participate to ensure their own safety. You know, they can't turn around and say, well, it's the borough's fault that X, Y, Z. So, we have to work in a partnership. So, I just wanted to say that, secondly, under that, impressing the importance of children being supervised when they're at play or escorted to more safer and wider places like playgrounds, fields, or even yards. So, with these little free, non-programmatic tweaks, we could have a safer community and an incident-free or reduced summer. I'd like to go on to the second topic, which is going to be number nine, Human Relations Commission on the agenda. And I'd like to go back and kind of start this by saying that since this is my second term, non-consecutively, I'm not speaking out of a blind spot of understanding the Human Relations Commission and what its function is, and I was just reading over the ordinance today. And we've been moving forward, and I've had discussions with Stacy Woodard, who is the executive director of the YWCA, whose distinct mission is the elimination of racism and the empowerment of women. The elimination of racism is one of the issues that the Human Relations Commission addresses. Also, Ms. Woodland is a part of the Montgomery County Human Relations Advisory Council. This advisory council is one of nine in the state of Pennsylvania. And I'm just going to read for you the counties that have advisory councils at the county level besides Montgomery County. Blair County Cambria Center, Cumberland, Dalphin and Perry as one entity, Lebanon, Lancaster and Berks as one entity, Monroe County, Allegheny, Washington, and Westmoreland as one affect, as well as York County. So, we have representation for discrimination issues that involve housing, that involves education inequities, as well as employment concerns, right here at the county level, already plugged in and functional. The concerns that I have had, I've stated previously, and one of those is that at the inception point of the Human Relations Commission, I'm sure that at 1967, it was a very savvy and cutting-edge idea to have the Pottstown Borough kind of leading the charge in that timeframe with this type of entity that in that time, when it was inceptioned, basically was saying that we are a flagship community concerned about civil rights issues and equality and equity issues at that time. So, I broadened this conversation to include Ms. Rose Markowski. She is the Director of Equity and Diversity at Montgomery County Community College. She's also the Chair of the Montgomery County Advisory Council to the PA State Human Relations Commission. In between these two women and myself, we have began to forge a plan for a transition entity that would accommodate all of the things that our ordinance says that the Human Relations Commission can provide. I believe that this is done not to minimize or to say that we don't have issues here, but to say that without a firewall for this entity and this entity meshed into the borough's governmental charges, that there's a reduction because of the subjectivity that's naturally imposed by that, that would be reduced or eliminated by having an objective standalone affect, which we will be working on hammering out the details for next month. And at that time, Ms. Woodland and Ms. Markowski will be coming to detail at the Committee of the Whole in April exactly how this advisory council functions at the county level. And there may be opportunity for appointments from people currently serving on our commission to be a part of the county affect, which is in is indeed appointments that are signed off by the state chairman of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and are acknowledged by the governor. At this time, I'd like to have it posted on the telecast, the numbers for the Pennsylvania State Human Relations Commission. And the Harrisburg office is 717-787-4410. The Philadelphia office is 215-560-2496. This entity will be able to provide enforcement, whereas our commission is a referral agency. In my advocacy situations and dealing with individuals in the community, they really need a resolution, not just a referral, or not just a workshop to tell them how to facilitate the problem, but some real teeth to get in there and get answers. The next thing I'd like to talk about is one of the most exciting opportunities that I feel has come to the borough that has also given me an opportunity to voice some somewhat innovative and esoteric concerns to Mr. Kelly Lewis from Lewis Strategic Business Solutions, who came to give a presentation at Montgomery County Community College regarding the gigabit revolution and their innovation to create a broadband backbone that doesn't travel up and down the 95 corridor, but is coming crosswise to the west. And some of the issues that I brought up were viable wage-paying jobs, which I know that our council president has put a 100 job this year. But I kind of broadened my expanse with that after hearing that when the broadband of this type was brought into a town in Tennessee, that there was a relocation of a manufacturing plant for Volkswagen, which brought 3,500 jobs. That would really be a great shot in the arm, something of that nature. So just in the hearing of that, with the implication being that the broadband was the draw, I can't guarantee that because I wasn't in on the transaction. But it does seem like it poses a lot of very positive and wide-open vistas to be explored. So I was able to provide a schematic of some things that I've, you know, really been thinking about. And another one relates to the Montgomery County 12-year transportation plan and how we can really get something workable for people to commute and to go to schools and jobs in Philadelphia, just like they did when the train was here. So wherever this conversation goes, it's definitely on my radar. In order to be progressive and innovative, you have to have access to other types of opportunities that don't always exist in your local area. There was also some discussion about making sure that our water and sewer improvements are indeed state-of-the-art from every possible level. And it's odd, the day after I was having a discussion with the borough manager about the processes that are used, and, you know, he assured me that things were on the up and up and the good. We weren't in a situation like Flint, Michigan. There was no concerns like that. But yet, this provides an opportunity for a triage to make sure that our systems are state-of-the-art and that they could, if they could be upgraded in any particular way, so be it. And also, an address to the clay pipe situation. This could be one way that we could work on things like that, as well as the collapsing arches. There was a section in there for crime prevention. And also, Mr. Lewis, in his presentation, really stressed the importance that he had found in using libraries to be a magnet for underserved populations as far as, you know, homework centers. But he also mentioned stores like Giant and other locations, which I included as the many local churches that have space. That was part of a plan many years ago in, when it was a discussion with Mr. Hilton about using the churches as alternative sites for schools. But this provides an opportunity to open those very same spaces up for improved broadband access to computers and technology as after-school centers, for one example. I was also able to present, I won't give all of the details of it, but an innovative concept that could draw venture capitalists that are interested in Pottstown to, as a bundle, purchase blighted properties and turn these properties not only into owner-occupied buildings, but also as small finance centers, small businesses per se, with some type of residential component and some type of business component. I would also like to say is very forward-looking with the youth summit, having a discussion with the teens and the police. And I also would like to thank Kismet Washington. She's going to be the facilitator. And, you know, we had some initial conversations based on the things that had happened in Narstown with this actual summit and how those things went. So we were discussing that, and then she got channeled in to speak with the chief and people from the chief and individuals from the school district to get this rolling. So I'm glad for this then. But again, the free, non-programmatic piece is what happens in the households. And I just would like to always stress that what goes on in your house, at your kitchen table, or whatever else, however you run your show in your house, is really, as rich as that can be, is as progressive and positive as the community can be. So I'm just encouraging the community. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Christopher Spuratt and all the staff and people that were involved in producing the plays even over the last two years. And what I'd really like to say about the whiz per se, is it really presented transformative processes. You know, they were magically in another place, and then they were magically back in the place where they came from. So I see Pottstown as a combination of Oz and Kansas. It's a transformative opportunity to be much different than we are today, but then, by the same token, be the same that we are in heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Borough Manager?
Thank you, sir.
Go for it.
Quickly, I want to let council know that I told you last month, well, we're nearing completion as of today. The Public Works Facility has been declared substantially completed, and inspections have been scheduled for this week. Provided that all goes well, we should have a use-in occupancy permit in the very near future. I want to let council know also that we received a $25,000 grant from the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission and the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation for the creation of a master plan at Pollock Park. Some of you may recall that Pollock Park was taken out of service or decommissioned until we came up with a plan, and this is the first step in making that happen. As a reminder, I know some of you probably realize the unfortunate death of former First Lady Nancy Reagan. The American flag should be flown at half-staff. And on a similar topic, I want to let you know that with sadness, retired borough employee Gilbert Penny Packer passed away on February the 25th. Gil worked for the borough for more than 30 years, first as a custodian at our old borough hall. Later, he was a water plant operator up until the time of his retirement. Gil will be sadly missed. One of his relatives is currently an employee at our sewer plant. Our thoughts and our prayers go out to the family. And last but not least, as a reminder, on March the 25th, Good Friday, Borough Hall will be closed.
Any questions for our Borough Manager?
Will be for soccer?
I'm sorry?
The park that you mentioned, the Pollock Park?
Pollock Park, yes.
Will be used for soccer?
We're not sure what it will be used for in the end. That's the purpose of the master plan, is to figure out what the appropriate use is for the park. That is one of the topics or one of the ideas, is to convert that into that type of work or area for Parks and Recreation Soccer Program.
Yeah, because the Latino community is growing, and soccer is one of the number one.
Soccer is growing throughout the United States, and Pottstown is no exception.
Good. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll have a presentation from the Lower Potsboro Township Chief, Chief Foltz. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me in. As some of you may know, on December 22nd, 2015, a little before 2:00 PM in the afternoon, Lower Potsboro Township responded to a burglary in progress in 900 block of Ivy Lane, which is right on the borough border where the Brookside Country Club joins the borough. Our department responded. Their female resident was home alone. It was Christmas time. She had Christmas presents downstairs. She was up in her bedroom. She'd just gotten out of the shower. And this was diversion-type burglary, where somebody was ringing the front doorbell. She looks out her second-floor window, looks down at the front porch, and sees a male subject standing there at the door. She figures it's a solicitor or something. She's not dressed. She's not going to get out and answer the door, so she goes about her business. Doorbell rings a few more times. She looks out again. Person's still standing there, starts to walk away from the house. Again, she thinks nothing more of it, thinks they're going to leave. She walks out of her bedroom to go across the hall to the bathroom, and she happens to encounter two subjects in her house. So in that short period of time, this actor had gone around to the back, joined up with his buddy. They came in through an unlocked door, went into the living room, which is just below her bedroom, and started to raid the Christmas gifts underneath the tree. The actor saw her. They fled out the house. She called her husband, who in turn calls 911. Our officers respond. Rather quick response time. Fortunately, we got in the area. We set up a perimeter. Our duty sergeant put out a bulletin to the Pottstown Borough Police Department, and your officers were very quick to respond and assist in this. I'd like to read a brief synopsis here. Based on a bulletin broadcast by Sergeant Walters of Lower Potsboro Township Police Department, Corporal Mike Long and the Pottstown Police Department responded to the area North Adams Street and Wilson Street, where he observed two suspects matching the suspect description. Upon approaching these suspects, they fled on foot. Corporal Long quickly apprehended one of the two suspects. The other eluded capture. Officer Slidower from Lower Potsboro Police Department and various other Pottstown units flooded that area. Officers responded, again, set up a secure perimeter, at which time Corporal Steve Hatfield of the Pottstown Police Department, along with his K-9 partner, Cato, deployed. Cato tracked the second subject, leading officers to him, where he was found hiding under a deck to another private residence in your borough. The subject was taken into custody without incident. It's this teamwork that goes hand in hand between the departments. Back in the day, we didn't have, Lower Potsboro didn't have a lot of officers on the street. You might have one guy on the street. You guys might have had half a dozen. We hear from time to time again, there's too many police. You know, the residents get on us about tax dollars and spending it on police. But I tell you, when you're a resident, when you have that kind of response, and as a police chief, when you see these workings come together because of the number of officers we have who flood an area and arrest suspects like this, it means a lot. So I'd like to commend these officers in front of the council tonight, if I could. Before I do that, let me read off the officers that were responding from Pottstown. Your Detective Division Sergeant Mike Markovich, Detective Mark Wickersham, Detective Brooke Fisher, Detective Launer, and Officer Dave Maul. From your crew unit, Sergeant Edward Crop, Officer Gregory Fritz, Officer Brandon Unruh, Officer Mike Breslin, Officer Tone Fisher, Officer, I believe it's Mike Luklinka. And Squad A2, under Corporal Long, Corporal Hatfield, K-9 Cato, Officer Ron Taylor, Officer Zawarchek, Officer Mitchell, and Officer Majewski. All those officers will be commended by the Lower Potsboro Township Police Department.
We received a letter from the Lowell Group after the event, and I want to share just an excerpt from it. It says, "In today's world, we hear so much negative news articles about the police. I would like to extend our sincere appreciation to your department for the response that day and the continued support we receive as we navigate through the criminal court system. Lisa and I would like to personally thank all the officers involved in the case for their tenacity and their very arduous labor. We are very happy and we are very pleased and we are eternally grateful for our men in blue."
Wow.
Thanks again, Council.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, New Johnson. So we're at Eastwood. Okay. All right, number seven on your list, the presentation from Johnson Controls. We're going to move that till Monday. Number eight is the presentation, Eastwood Car Company Show at the airport. Anyone speaking?
Yes, James Rullier from Flyle, our fixed base operator at the airport, and Steve Herter of Eastwood Company.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm not sure I have enough information packed, but I will have some information, like, share.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to come here. Eastwood has, for, this will be our sixth year, has had what we call our Summer Classic, which is a car show. And we've had it at Eastwood on Shoemaker Road the last five years. It has continued to grow over the last five years, and so we're looking to expand that this year. And being the airport is just down the street, we talked to James, and we feel that that would be a good location for the show. It would offer more space where we could offer more activities for the community, have a few more cars there. We would be able to do some demonstrations of product, and we're hoping to invite some agencies from the county and the borough township, the area, to be involved in this event. It really make it a family event there. So James has been very cooperative and helpful in working with us, so we're planning that. What I've given you here is just kind of a quick outline of the proposed date that we have, which is July 30. It would be, the show would be from 8:00 to 3:00. We're expecting around 1,500 show cars and spectator cars. I know last year, we had about 2,500 people. We had 500 cars, which filled up our property, and that's the reason why we're looking for additional space on there. And again, we're looking for people to show off their cars. It's an opportunity for the community to get out and enjoy being with another, seeing other activities. And Izzy's would be able to present our products and help people in showing them how to restore cars and various steps with that. Some of the things that I have done in this packet, I've given a tentative kind of layout of how we plan on using the property. And then the last page is just kind of some suggested events that we're planning on exploring for the show. And then also, just we realize that in an event like this, there's obviously going to be a lot of logistics involved. In the last several years, we have worked with James Smell of Goodwill, and they have been helping us directing traffic flow and with safety. And we're looking to continue that, realizing that's a very important part of whatever we do, it needs to be safe.
Okay. Personally, I, you know, when this was first presented to me, one of the big things that we one of the big things that we always wanted to do is kind of bring light to the airport. Like I said before, it's kind of amazing. I talk to people, and they're like, "There's an airport there?" I'm like, "Oh, man, there's a buzzkill, right?" Yeah? Um, so what I think is, this is a big community event. This is an event that everybody can come to. That not only brings light on our local business, but it also brings light, a positive light, to the airport. Um, we plan to work in conjunction. We'll have our airplanes there. We'll have people there to talk to people. Um, we won't be doing any kind of flying that day, uh, just for a safety side of things. A lot of people walking around, you know? But I think, you know, from a community standpoint, I think it's, it would be a big outreach-type program. Um, and speaking on behalf of Fly Elite, um, after the event like this, um, we also plan to make a donation to the Pottstown Borough, just for all the great cooperation and, you know, being able to be part of the community like we have been so far.
Okay.
Sorry. Very bad.
So, so both entities are in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions from council?
That's why, do you have a Saturday and then a rain date on a Sunday? How does that affect your pilots that, that are, I mean, obviously it's grounded, so is that in, how big of an inconvenience is that for the people to fly in and out?
It's not really an issue. So what we plan to do is, once, you know, if we get approval for this event, we would send out a newsletter to obviously all of our base customers, all the people we do business with, and let them know, like, hey, listen, why don't you come out to the car show? We're gonna basically close down for the day, just to have this event, and here are our dates. So logistically, everybody can kind of plan for the weekend. Um, and I think with the timing of the show, it gives people an appropriate amount of time to both leave and come back, um, without too much disruption of their schedule overall.
Do I, do I understand, uh, you're looking at the loss of revenue for the day as an investment in the future?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I think, uh, if we could bring a positive light to the airport, um, show that we are part of the community, get people out there for a nice fun day, I think it would be a positive thing, and I don't know if you can really put a dollar figure on that.
Okay. Anything else up here?
I have, um, another question about, are there bike wrecks at the airport? And the only reason I'm asking is that I've seen this at the downtown car show, that there's a lot of peo-, you know, people on bikes. A lot of times they're children, and the, the car owners have a, you know, they're very particular about scratches and things of that sort. So in that same vein and thought, uh, at the Limerick Airport Day, they had a lot of involvement with scouts, and, um, I'm just thinking with this many cars, you know, if people come with a bike, they should be somewhere for them to park it and lock it, and maybe utilizing not only just fire police, but also, um, service organizations from the school or from the scouts or other concerned youth that could all be maybe dressed in whatever they're representing or something that represents the airport or, or that day, and serve as kind of like ushers, just walking around, because people do like to touch shiny cars.
Absolutely, and I agree a hundred percent. Um, one of the things like we do for our Airport Day, our open houses, any kind of events, we reach out to Civil Air Patrol, Boy Scouts, some of our pilots are parts of different groups. Um, the one thing I have not done, which I would really like to get into, is reaching out to the local schools, um, to get volunteers, whether it's from ROTC, from other specialty groups. And we would also be more than happy to provide an area for local organizations, you know, to maybe set up something with their flyers and stuff like that so they can talk to everybody and kind of just reach out and mingle. I think that's kind of the big, big picture item here, is that everybody can talk to each other, everybody can kind of just, in a relaxed environment, you know, kind of see everything and talk to people. I mean, that's been the greatest part of all these events, is I get to meet a lot of people. I get to talk to a lot of people. You know, you get to hear the concerns from people around. Because, you know, sometimes the problem with airports is they don't know who to approach. And one of the big things I've found is, is that when people know who they can approach, they know if they have concerns, that they can come up and talk to you, they can shoot you an email, things become a lot better within the whole group itself. Um, so, yeah, absolutely, we would involve with the community, um, to have their presence, and we would definitely provide a safe area for all the bikes to be parked, locked up, whether inside of our hangars or in some other way.
And the swap meet is, do you already know the table price or how that is?
We haven't got that far yet.
But it'll be a maximum number of tables because of the space kind of thing?
Yeah, I, quite honestly, I, it's a pretty large space. I don't expect us to fill it up.
Okay.
Counselor Arms. Uh, Pottstown High School has an Air Force ROTC. Might they be interested?
I only worry about July thirtieth, people on vacation, but I, I mean, they, they helped out the community the day before. Uh, it's just tough to get kids, if, if they're away, whatever. But I'm sure somebody would be willing to help out, yeah.
So.
James, I have a question about the car show parking. This is, this is where the planes that don't have hangars, that's where they're normally located?
Uh, yes. So, kind of in that area, what we plan to do is, like I said, when we, if we get an approval for this, we would reach out to all of our base customers, and we would then, with their permission, move the airplanes to a secure location, um, unless they said, "Hey, we don't mind our airplane being out there on display", and then we'll set it up in our display.
Oh, amongst the cars?
Yeah. Absolutely. So we plan to bring the big airplanes, the small airplanes, the loud airplanes.
Did you, um, check with the fire police yet? I just, because I know they had some concerns about the, the limited number of volunteers that they have for doing a lot of community events.
Um, we have not reached out to them yet. We've used them in the past, but we do plan on reaching out to them. And if you had any other suggestions of people that we should have involved, you know, please let me know. You know, we'll be glad to reach out, include, include them. Because we realize that, you know, there's definitely, we want to have tra-, traffic flow moved safely, and we want the people to be safe there. So, and it, being at an intersection of two roads, even though they're not particularly busy, but we still need to have good traffic control, um, there, for everybody's safety.
Also, in addition, um, you, uh, it just seems like with your emphasis on community that it could be more of a regional concern, so just not the fire police from Pottstown, but, you know, to kind of go out, outside the box and the thinking of it. And, um, this is just an aside for me, but that's a high political campaigning season, so if you want to put people with their campaign stuff on and give them a job as a traffic police option, that'd be neat.
Why not? Ms. Penrod, uh, being a local pilot, member of our Airport Committee?
Deb Penrod, um, I live in Pottstown, and my husband and I have a couple airplanes.
Will you come to Mike?
Oh. Now I'm gonna get nervous. Deb Penrod, uh, I live in Pottstown, and my husband and I have two airplanes at, at the airport. You all know me as the advocate for the Community Airport Day in the end of September, and I'm like all maniac about the airport. So I agree, I think that anything that can call attention to the airport and its presence and its, you know, its value, anybody, anything that can translate from touching a shiny car into touching and flying a shiny aircraft, I think it's a wonderful idea. That particular intersection, I think historically, they're now accustomed to crazed traffic patterns for Airport Day, for the goat race, for can jam. It won't be, I don't think, a surprise to anybody to find out that it's a complete disaster that day. As far as airplanes on site who might need to get moved off of the tie-downs, we would love to have our, our, my, my husband would love to have his plane as part of the demonstration, but I think we may be out of town that weekend, flying cross-country with the airplane, but certainly there may well be other people who would love to have their plane front and, and center for attention. And, um, I can't remember anything else because I can't read the handwriting on my hand. But I mean, I think in general, you know, obviously shutting down the airport is, it is not insignificant. It's a big deal. And the, the part of me who's a pilot and an acquaintance and friends with people who have airplanes there, you all know how easy it is to piss off pilots, right? Some of them will not be happy. But, you know, if they, if they do it well, schmooze and provide, you know, adequate notice, I think, I think in general, if it's exposure for the airport, I think that's probably a good thing.
So, so I understand you think it's a good investment.
Yeah, yeah. I think it'll be, I mean, we, the, um, the, the, the Air Force ROTC guys have been wonderful for, um, Airport Day. I worry about diluting the, their participation later on in September, but, you know, those guys have so much energy, and they're so interested in doing stuff like this, and they love the airport. I, I wouldn't doubt, but would it be possible, um, for, for Jake to get them out for two events? Over the summer, it will be a little bit questionable, but I think you certainly. Um, just FYI, there are other airport events going on in the next couple of months down at Limerick. But again, anything aviation-related, I think is always visibility. You know, get them, get them interested in flying an airplane, even if it means they have to ride in some silly car first. What a waste.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it might be a little off-topic, but I, since you're here, actually, I've been watching a lot of Eastwood's YouTube videos recently, and it's, uh, it's not always just technical, um, auto-body restoration, but they also highlight the town very well, as, as well, and they drive around today. And there's one where you kind of went around the circle of progress and kind of highlighted some of our businesses, like the, uh, like Sly Fox, and it still works, so.
And we'll often go to local businesses as they do work and, um, you know, highlight them and show the work that they're doing. So, Eastwood is definitely the community. We want to help promote the community.
Okay.
So just one last thing. If you're gonna give a donation to the borough and the fire police are involved, and they're very short-funded, I'm hoping that some of that or all of that could go to the, the donation to the fire police.
We will be giving them a donation.
Okay then. Thank you, and we'll list this for Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, number nine, Human Relations Commission. Uh, we, we have heard some talk about this earlier from the mayor's report. Uh, you, no, no, you, you have issue?
You don't need to sign it.
No, 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 we're talking about this issue. Do you have a presentation? Do you have comment? Okay, otherwise, uh, what I'm gonna suggest to council is that we table this until April. We're gonna be getting, uh, presentations from probably Montgomery County and from the state, and, uh, do some own, our own local research.
I, I had signed up to.
Well, if you've said, is this for personal or is this for?
It's, it's on behalf of the Human Relations.
Okay, then, then go ahead.
I was very saddened to hear what the mayor had suggested because I don't believe that, um, the Human Relations Commission in the borough of Pottstown has had an opportunity to really prove theirself. I understand that the history has been, for many years, that, you know, they really couldn't get it together. But now that they have someone that can coordinate the activities, um, I think the initial meeting, I had asked if, um, there was a possibility that they could, uh, reevaluate the ordinance, uh, to give the commission enforcement powers so that we would be able to be effective in being able to do the work that, the important work that's done by the commission. Uh, I don't know if it's just one person that makes the decision what happens with the Human Relations Commission, or do you, um, vote as a, a council as the whole, as a whole?
Council would vote.
Okay. Uh, also, I wanted to say that, uh, there are so many people in this community that feel that they're very, um, they're disenfranchised because they don't have a say. Of course, what other issues are that the commission has not had, um, a stable environment to have a office space. We don't even have a telephone. I'm working from home, doing the work of the commission. And I think that, um, as a part of, because I asked if they were a part of local government or if it was a quasi-agency, and I was told that it was absolutely, uh, part of local government. So, um, I know that Mr., um, is it Mr. Gander Garner? Yes, that, um, he did speak to that fact, and he did, um, send information that the borough could, or they don't have to, but they could also, um, approve to have the commission have enforcement powers. I, I would just ask that you, um, really think about that and have a fair and impartial, um, make a fair and impartial decision as to, you know, what is gonna happen with the commission. I don't think that you could really make an educated decision if they haven't even had a chance to have a office and be in a, in a place where, you know, they could do good for the community. Also, um, I, I noticed that you had talked about, um, I guess the CDVG funding is gonna be up. Are, are they, um, is it the request for proposals? Or could, um, we submit a grant and ask for some of the monies to fund, um, the commission?
As far as I know, you ask for any grant you like.
But that would, again, have to come, um, through the borough.
Okay, uh, I stayed corrected. The borough would have to apply.
The borough would have to apply. Okay. Um, I, I also wanted to, um, just give a little bit of my background. I am, I did work for a Human Relations Commission in Redding for ten years. So, I'm well aware of what the process is, um, and sometimes, uh, the Human Relations Commission at the state level is extremely overwhelmed with, um, different complaints that it could take, take two, three years for a person to have any kind of, um, solutions or, you know, that they can have their voices heard. And so that's why they appoint local commissions so that, um, people would be able to get some type of due process or they would be able to, um, uh, be able to have some kind of mediation. Anyway, at some point, though, uh, they could be made hold in one way or another. So I, I would just, again, ask you to please think about, um, instead of thinking about, um, putting us, you know, with this commission and not having something here locally for people to come and, um, have their voices heard, that you would really think about it and, um, give some thought to the people in the community and what their needs are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have few members of, in the community who want to be part and will be, want to be appointed as a Human Relation Commission. Can you please, Kamon? Mr. Watson? Aldan? Carla Day?
Hi.
Very quick.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Bobby Watson. I was born and raised in Pottstown, and, uh, I moved away to Los Angeles. And, uh, my father, Sam Green, was a community person. My cousin, Newstel Marable, was a community person. So I'm here to help out in the community. I feel that the, uh, Human Relations Commission needs a local place for referrals, just like when they used to catch a train from right back here. You can't catch it anymore, you gotta go to Narsted. And so just to have that referral right here available to the people, I think, would be very, very effective. I am here to support my local community, the police department, anything to help to make Pottstown a better place. So that's why I'm here today, and I think that having a local chapter, even if it's a referral to the people in Narsted, is desperately needed. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
My name is Lavinia Lister, and I've, I want the Pennsylvania, the local Human Relations Commission here also. I have been through a lot of things, you know, so I may not have a lot of education, but I got experience. And we definitely need the people here in Pottstown, in our community, to know what the Human Relations does, the housing, it, they help with housing, racial discrimination, all, they need to know that. And, um, we just need it here. We, we definitely do. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carla Day, and I am, um, coming back, coming back to the commission. I was appointed back in the nineties when, um, Mayor Robinson had the, um, the. I was appointed back in the 90s when Mayor Robinson had the idea of bringing the commission back and having a, having a, a voice and having a mediation opportunity for the people of Pottstown. And I do believe that it's, it's time to continue that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aldon. I'm sure most of yous know me. It's important to have the commission here because we need hands on here in Pottstown. Okay? I used to deliver furniture. I've delivered to the KK before, KKK, that's what I said. There was a police officer in Reading who was KKK, delivered to him. What we got to do is you can't get mad, you can't get angry, you got to change the way that person thinks. So when I get in that situation, I'm out to change the way that person thinks. I don't care if you're a KKK, I don't care if you're green, I don't care if you're purple. Have to change the way the person thinks, okay? Excuse me. I work at a hotel in Lansdale. The maid makes eight dollars an hour. She told me last year, I hate niggers. I said, what did you say? She said, I hate niggers. I said, I said, um, why, why, well, how come you like me so much? She said, you're not a nigger. So what I'm saying is, I said, well, what seems to be your problem? So once me and her talked, I found out what the root of the problem was and we became good friends and I worked on that with her. We worked together on that to take care of that issue. So there's a lot of issues like this that are in Pottstown that if you get a group from the outside, they're not going to be able to put their hand, their hand on it. I know on paper, it looks like we didn't do a lot of stuff, but I had people call me all the time. I'm driving from Reading to Pottstown. I got somebody calling me like four o'clock in the morning because we didn't have a phone. They're like, we can't reach you. I had a girl, a guy. Where have I been? I've been to, I did an event at Olivetts. I did an event up in Reading at BCAT. I did one at Millsver about three weeks ago. There's a new law out now called Senate Bill 166. Do you know what Senate Bill 166 is? Anyone know what it is? I went to Philadelphia two weeks ago. I did that event. Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't do that event, but I attended that event. It's a new law. It's for people who have misdemeanor records, misdemeanor one and two. After like seven years, it's passed and everything. It's going to take like 250 days. Then they can go out and get jobs and stuff like that. So these are the things that I'm doing here in Pottstown and that's what we're doing here in Pottstown, but we haven't been documented because we have no office. We don't have an office. So we can't document what we're trying to do. So having said that, I mean, advisory thing, it sounds like a good option. I mean, it's something we need to sit down, we need to discuss it. But like I said, if we don't sit down, you got to put your hand on it. That's how you do it, you got to put your hand on it. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments?
Mr. Watson? The commission always had the ability to do referrals, correct? That was, that was the, part of the mission of the?
Part of the ordinance.
So I'm confused that you, what are you asking for? Because you're, the ordinance is already set up to do the things that you're currently doing.
Thank you. What I was referring to, if I didn't misread the mayor's remarks, was that this is just a referral agency. Is that correct? The HRC? Is that what you said?
The, how it reads in the ordinance is that, I think it was point E maybe under the, under the functions clause, is that it's a referral for discriminatory issues.
Okay. So.
So that whatever you're finding or whatever's reported to you, your only capacity is reporting. So most of the issues are litigation quality and there's no solicitor. There's, you know, I mean, this is the borough solicitor. But these things will require more like a civil rights attorney.
Okay.
Or a real estate, you know, law type of intervention to put the clamp down on the actual issue, not just taking a fielding. You understand what I'm saying? We actually have had workshops conducted here by the regional office where, this was during my first term, the comment was made that sometimes people just need a listening ear. I don't operate like that personally, you know, a shoulder to cry on type of thing. No. These people have real problems and they need real solutions. And, you know, this advisory council at the county level is closer to putting the issue right into the hands of a party that is able to act on immediately.
And that's what I was saying, that to be people that we, that will be from here, that would be referred to them. Is that what you're saying?
They would have the option to go directly to the state or through the advisory council because there might be some triage. It's the same thing when I get complaints and those complaints are maybe someone thinks it's a crime, but it's not.
Yes.
Just like Mr. Dunn brought up about the name-calling issue. You know, I called about someone being charged out of their character in a public place and I was told that whatever was said to them out of their character was under free speech. So therefore, I can walk in any building, you can, and some third party that has an issue can start screaming anything they want under free speech.
And I understand all that. So what I'm saying is that there needs to be a local place for people to come and even if they have to do the paperwork here to refer to them. I'm not saying that we're going to be a referral agency. I'm saying there's a place that they need to come, that they have a place to come. Instead of going to Norristown or not knowing how to get a hold of Norristown, if they know there's a local chapter, I can go down here and do this and they'll do, take the necessary information and forward it to the necessary parties. That's the only thing I'm saying.
But that's what we are talking about with this transition entity, having a place either at the YWCA or at the college that is static. And, you know, the types of meetings that Mr. Dunn was talking about, like his, the expungement hearing that he has, you know, Judge Garrett Page is planning a similar event again for youth and I'm suggesting adults. And the best way to build the crowd for that type of event is to build it from individuals that are already in need of hearing that, whether it starts with children in school that are constantly in in-school suspension, children that have been expelled, children that have had things like disorderly conduct, whether in the community or at school, and people that need community service hours, whether they're adults or youth, can have mandated requirements to be at these type of events. And that can be documented as service hours according to, you know, whatever type of, you know, circumstances that they're in that require that. So therefore, having a community event that's really tailored for specific individuals has to be fine tuned so that the individuals that need to hear that are there. And then the other concerned parties are going to make up a much smaller faction and then they would understand. You understand what I mean?
Sure.
If a child has a tendency already in the seventh and eighth grade to be constantly in school suspension, constantly late, constantly absent, them and their parent could have to come to an event like this so that they can be educated how to prevent the next things that could happen. So, so what I'm saying is that we really don't need a commission to facilitate those type of things, just some more streamlining.
Excuse me, but we're not talking about that type of issue. We're talking about having a commission, period, overseeing anything. So my question would be, how do you feel about having a commission here in Pottstown?
Me personally?
Yes, ma'am.
How I feel about it is based on my experience and also knowing many pinpoint issues that I have had my hand on like that. And when I go to advocacy, advocacy groups or individuals who say they're community activists or per se, don't really have the capacity to facilitate the issues.
Or have any weight.
Pardon me?
Or have any weight.
Correct.
So what can we do?
I mean, you know, just on a personal level, I believe that advocacy is a responsibility of individuals. So, I mean, I'm advocating all the time, but it's a factor of finding that, those teeth to get those issues handled. And sometimes it's really a needle in a haystack. When you go start talking about real estate concerns, when you really start talking about people that are literally being abused and forced to live in squalor because of the conditions that are allowed from their landlord. See, I don't really want to go down dirty with it, but it's taking more than an education workshop to really facilitate what's really needed. And that's what I would get. Well, we'll bring a workshop. No, 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 I don't want a workshop. I want the person to come who can remediate this problem.
But I did hear the gentleman say that the council will consider about this commission and table it for Aprils. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, I would say at this time, we all need a little more education. We have plans to have.
Dan, can I just ask a couple of questions so I can get just a little more education for myself?
Okay.
On the state level, they have, on the state level, they have an administrative legal staff that's overseen by executive directors in Harrisburg and regional directors in Harrisburg, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. Eleven commissioners are appointed by the governor and they're confirmed by the senate. You're talking about a local Human Relations Commission and it sounds to me like you're asking for some kind of legal authority. To be able to do that, you would have to retain a civil rights attorney, a real estate attorney, somebody that has that ability to, yeah, to enforce the law.
I just, I don't do this, I'm not asking for any legal authority. I'm not an attorney. Just asking for some assistance and helping getting a commission established here in Pottstown. Whatever may take from you.
I'm curious because we have a Human Relations Commission, so I guess I'm confused about what we're asking.
Can I answer that? Yes, they do have a Human Relations Commission that is all over, it's through the state of Pennsylvania and they're located in Harrisburg. They do have regional offices in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh and, no, and then there's, there's a lot of Human Relations Commissions at the local levels. Like because the Human Relations Commission at the state level understands that there's, there's thousands and thousands and thousands of complaints that go there during, in a year's time, what they do is they rely on the local commissions that have enforcement power to be able to work out the cases. Like you would do a fact finding, you do the intake and then a fact finding hearing and then if you feel that the case has merit, which every case does not have merit, then you would set up an investigation. And then you would have, like the city solicitor from the city of Reading acted as our solicitor as well. So, you know, you don't have to have a team of attorneys to have enforcement power. It has to come through the borough. The borough has to make the decision if they want to give enforcement power to the local Human Relations Commission so that they can in turn be able to intake complaints, like I said, do fact finding hearings, do investigations. And the enforcement power only allows the Human Relations Commissions at the local level to be able to go out to businesses or to do education and outreach about different issues that are being talked about in the community. So you really don't have to have a team of lawyers. I, in the initial meeting that I had your solicitor, I had asked him if we had to get a solicitor on our own and he said that we could probably use your borough solicitor. Just, you know, if we had any questions about anything. And we're always also welcome to use the commissioner, the solicitor at the state level as well.
I'm sure there's funding that goes along, well, I know there's funding that goes along with our local solicitor. I'm sure there's funding that would have to go along with a state solicitor at all. Okay, so I understand that, I understand that the outreach because that's currently what you're already doing. And so when you say intake, fact finding and investigation, so then I would have like other questions, like what standards are set forth for the commission members at that point? I mean, is there testing, certification requirements, background checks, clearances?
Yes.
Yes, I was the executive director and administrator for the city of Reading Human Relations Commission. And to do the intake, when people come in to the office, you have a secretary that, you know, will say, tell me what your issue is. And then, you know, she'll take their information and then if I think that there's merit to their complaint, then what I do is I would tell the secretary to set up an appointment so they can come in and I can do a formal intake. And then what happens is that I would consult the respondent. They're called the complainant and the respondent. And I would send a letter out to the respondent saying that these allegations were made against you. I would like to have an opportunity to speak with you. Could you please call so we can set up an appointment? And then at that point, I would see if, you know, if either party would be willing to mediate the situation, that would be okay. If not, then what happens is that I'll set up a full fact finding hearing, have one of the investigators go out and talk to different people in the community that might bear witness to what might have happened. Or, and we send for discovery, we send for the paperwork, any kind of evidence that the complainant has or the respondent has. And then at that point, it will go into a full investigation.
And your investigators, what certification are you talking about that these investigators have?
They have to be certified through the Equal Opportunity Employment Commission, the EEOC. Now, I, I gave them a grant and asked them, a proposal and asked them to allow us to do their intake and investigations and bring employment discrimination cases to, you know, to a resolution. And so they gave us a $50,000 grant. So what happens is that the EEOC will send us money so that we can send all the investigators to training all over the country. I had extensive training at John Marshall Law School, at a law school in Florida and about maybe three times a year, I had to go to HUD training in different parts of the country. So we are well educated and informed about what the new laws are in employment discrimination, what the laws are under the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the PHRC, whenever they get a complaint, what they do is they do a file it with the EEOC. And in the local commission, if we have a contract with HUD, with HUD, under the Office of Fair Housing and the EEOC, then we would, I would send them a copy of the complaint to dual file it with both with the state and the federal agency. And then what they would do is when the investigations are complete and the case is closed, then they would send us like $1,500 per case.
Ms. Milley, would I like to suggest for councils that we table this until April? And we already have two presentations, one from the state, one from the county. We should invite the local as well. And everybody can put all their cards on the table at the same time.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll conclude this at this time and we'll table it for April. Where are we now? Airport Engineering Consultant Recommendation.
Thank you. We have, our Transportation Committee has gone through the process, the competitive solicitation process for our airport engineer. We went through that interview and we had ranked and selected Delta Airport consultants and are recommending them to move forward. We would need your approval to negotiate a new contract.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll list that for Monday.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Number 11, request for early termination of Whitmer Aviation lease with the Borough.
Okay. Before you, you should have a request from the owner of Whitmer Aviation and the less C of the Borough's maintenance facility at the airport. It's a 13,000 square foot facility. Owner is Eves Aynard. He is here this evening to answer any questions you may have regarding his request. He included those details, but I would ask him to come up and have a seat and discuss that with you.
Sure. Thank you.
So I would like to request an early termination of a lease that I have with the Borough pending the sale of the business to Fly Elite. Fly Elite approached me, I guess, in late last year, and we've come to agreement in principle for transfer of the business to Fly Elite, who's done actually a very good job over the last year and a half or so since they took over, so I would like to do that.
Okay, and there's someone else taking over?
Yeah, Fly Elite.
Okay.
Yep.
And do you have an idea when that date might be?
So the, I think, working with Ms. Batdorf, we selected a March 31 date, so that's when we'd like to transfer the lease over to Fly Elite. Or I think there may be a renegotiation or a new lease, or whatever the Borough decides with that. Yeah, so 31 March.
Mr. Garner, I think under contract, they need to give us 120-day notice.
I think if I recall, it's a 90-day.
90-day.
It's longer than the March 31. And that was, yes, that's correct. If it, if it all works with everybody and all the concerned parties, I think it would be better, or I think it would be in everybody's best interest to do a transfer of the business now before flying season starts, rather than try to do a transfer of the, of the business, you know, when everybody's starting to get back into the air once the winter hibernation is over.
Is it contemplated that it will be a simple assignment of the existing lease or a renegotiation with additional provisions in the lease? What is being discussed between you and the new entity that might take over?
Well, I think that would be between the Borough and the new entity. When I took over the lease initially from the previous owner, Tom Whitmer, I negotiated a new lease that was in a sense the same lease as it was, we just had the same terms and conditions and, you know, carried it forward and extended it and out until whenever it was. I'd assume that would be the same thing with Fly Elite, but, you know, it's clearly between Fly Elite and the Borough.
Would you suggest we negotiate a lease with the new owner?
Well, I don't know if Ms. Batdorf has any additional information or concerns about the process, I guess.
Sure. The second item on the agenda naturally is a request from Fly Elite on this very topic. They provided a description of their plan to take over. In that description, they have a multitude of different businesses and expanding on certain things that they would like to offer. So I would let them speak to that in the next agenda item, and then maybe that can help with the discussion a little bit to put a picture together.
Sure, sure.
And if you don't mind commenting, maybe?
Absolutely.
If there's something that we need to look at. It, it sounds like, in reviewing Fly Elite's proposal, that a renegotiation of the lease, it would be needed because of the change in the scope.
Okay.
It is different. Maintenance would be an aspect of the takeover, so.
All right.
But I'll let them explain that.
Please.
As the next one? Okay, thank you. All right.
Fort Firing Squad again.
Wow.
So basically, kind of, what we were looking at is the broader picture. We're trying to become, you know, a true aviation company. And the one thing I think I've said before is you have to be multifaceted. You know, you got to have everything available all the time. You know, that's one of the struggles if you're just a maintenance facility, if you're just a flight school, if you're, you know, you're just selling fuel. You just have that. But what I'd like to do is offer everything for anybody that needs anything. You know, we'd have maintenance, we would have storage, we're looking to negotiate a contract with a medevac company to bring helicopters into the airport. I think that's a huge stance for the airport. Not only is it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, everybody within the community knows if that day comes and you need that kind of transportation, they're literally right down the street. So from that kind of aspect, I think that's the next step in our growth, is not only just to provide maintenance, but to provide everything from housing the airplanes, to working on the airplanes, to detailing the airplanes, to restoring the airplanes, to having the medevacs here, and being able to offer something for everybody. One of the programs that we wanted to start during springtime is kind of dust off the, dust off the old wings and go out and fly. It's amazing how many people buy airplanes and they don't fly. You know, for me, if I had an airplane, I'd be out there every day, I probably wouldn't even be here today. But a lot of people buy airplanes and then come up with the excuses and excuses and excuses and excuses. So what we'd like to do is, hey, tune your airplane up, get it washed, we have flight instructors ready to go, let's get out there and fly. So in that way, we would offer a lower fuel price, you know, so you can try to get rid of that excuse. We'd have the flight instructors, the airplanes would be certified, legal, ready to go, and maybe open it up to some other airplanes that maybe were looking for a heated hangar of some sort, stuff along those lines.
Okay. So Mr. Garner, the smoothest transition would be to come to an agreement between the Borough and Elite, and they could take over the day that we release the current owner?
Yes, as far as procedural, that'd be correct. You'd certainly want to have someone else in place before you release the prior tenant, and I think you'd want to be comfortable with whatever the agreement was.
Right.
And I guess I'll just throw one more wrinkle into this, just so everyone can consider it, and the comments aren't intended to discourage anybody's efforts at the airport. But please recall that this, this is Borough property, this is public property. When we've gone out in the past for the fixed-based operator, when we've gone out in the past for the maintenance hangar, RFP, we've had a very open process where we've encouraged folks to submit proposals to make sure that whatever is going to be there is something that is good for the Borough, is something the Borough Council believes is appropriate. And another component is revenue. And obviously, we want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck when we put this public property out there. It's not just for certain people, it's for everyone to use. So no disrespect to our fixed-based operator and the fact that they have a plan for this other building, but frankly, this is a Borough asset, much like we did with the Ricketts Center, which was Borough property, we put it out for an RFP, we accepted proposals as far as who was going to operate it and how that was going to work. In my opinion, and I haven't seen the lease or the proposed new lease, it sounds to me like you're certainly changing or expanding the scope of the activities in what was a maintenance hangar or a maintenance business originally.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying that the new proposal isn't good, but it's certainly different than what was originally put out when we have our original lease with the current operator or the operator before that.
Right.
So you are changing significantly, from what I'm hearing, what was the purpose of that original lease with that FBO who was doing maintenance. So that's just for you to consider, and I'm certainly open to hear Erica's suggestions or comments on how that works. But I think it just had to be said and considered, no matter how you want to move forward, because again, it's not a private negotiation here, this is public property that has to have a process to make sure we're getting the most that we can get for the Borough and its residents.
So for the best interest of our residents, we should be putting together an RFQ for Monday night's approval?
Well, I'm saying you should consider that, and it's up to you to decide how you want to proceed. But certainly, we're looking at something more than just an assignment of an existing maintenance hangar lease.
Any other comments? All right, then we'll list it for Monday evening. I'm drafting RFP at that time. Okay, is that fair?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garner. Okay, item 14, we will be putting it off until April. Also, 15, the Schuylkill River Restoration, that'll be delayed until April. And in its place, I'd like to do an add-on of the destruction of our documents. Mr. Flabbers?
As council, most of council is aware, on a regular basis, in accordance with the law, municipal records that are no longer required to be maintained are destroyed. Many of them are digitized first, but nonetheless, they are able to be destroyed and is done through the process of a resolution. And I believe Mr. Garner has had an opportunity to, I hope he's had an opportunity to review the proposed resolution, and we would ask council to authorize the destruction of the documents.
Okay. Any discuss?
When you say digitized, does that mean that they're stored on some type of a cloud format, or is it a hard?
Yes and no. Some of the documents in the Borough are backed up through a service and they are cloud-based from the inception or when they're origi, as soon as they're scanned. Many of the documents in the Borough are scanned to a server here in the Borough, but we run backups, daily backups to the cloud, so the answer to your question is yes and no.
And that's all the ones that you're requesting destruction of that are already backed up?
I am not sure that, some of these documents date back to a point, there's really no need to even have them digitized, and I have no idea why they're still here. They serve no purpose. So with that said, the ones that need to be digitized are digitized, yes.
And the frequency of this procedure?
Typically, it occurs annually. There's been a couple of years where it's occurred more than once in the year, but we're at a point now where it's pretty typically annually.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll list this for Monday. Where are we now? 16, Pottstown Area Closed Loop Signal System Extension.
So we received a letter from Traffic Planning and Design. The current agreement for the closed-loop signal system expires on March 31 of this year. It is anticipated that they will need a extension to allow for issues to be resolved regarding the coordination of the railroad signals out here on Hanover Street. And with that said, the request of extension with a new expiration date for part two of the agreement will be December 31 of this year. We've been told that if it doesn't get resolved by then, it's probably dead.
Okay.
And we don't anticipate it to be dead, though, right? We anticipate it to go through.
No. We're probably at the highest level of confidence we've been, and, boy, I don't know if the word confidence is appropriate, but nonetheless, nonetheless, we're at the highest level we've been, so we'll see.
For years.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll list that. And 17, bid award for Pottstown Regional Public Library?
The bids have been opened. They were open on February 26 in regard to the alterations to the Pottstown Public Library. At the end of the day, the low bidder and recommendation to award the bid is to SMJ Contracting out of Douglasville.
Okay. Can we just remind council why we're opening bids for the library?
Yes, you can.
Okay, because this was a project that the library received grant funds, and unfortunately, the Borough had to serve as the conduit in order to obtain the grant funds. Under the grant agreement, the Borough was actually the quote owner of the project, even though we aren't. So we've been working hand in hand with the library board to come up with an agreement and assist them in this bid process and bid project, and I think we're happy to see that the numbers purportedly came in as estimated. So it's not your project, but you're still required to take formal action.
Any other comments? Okay, then we'll list that for Monday. 18, bid award for lawn maintenance.
I believe Mr. Yerger is prepared to discuss that one.
We opened up the bids for annual mowing contracts. We have them broken down into three groups. The first group is the airport, and there's the lot north of the runway, and then the runway, the airport itself. The bid on the airport itself went up considerably from last year. The north, referred to as the Northfield, is the same, so we do have a considerable increase on that particular one compared to last year, we were at 520, this year it's at 1,000. On the, what we call Group Two, which is the right-of-ways, and most of this stuff is like grass islands along the edges of different locations throughout the Borough. The biggest project in this group is probably the wastewater treatment plant, and that one actually went down a little bit. Last year, that was 550, this year it's 220. So some of these have gone up and down. The airport's the biggest hit overall on the Group Two. The overall price actually went down from $35,600 last year to this year's bid is $23,625, so that's got a substantial decrease. On the Group Three, which includes all of our Borough properties, our vacant lots, pump stations, water tanks, stormwater easement in there, that group, let's see, was it 20,000 this year, 600? And last year, it came in at 25,700, so we had another decrease on that group. The airport group, the airport itself is a little troubling because of the steep increase on that one. Certainly, we could reject that, the problem we're going to have when we reject it and start over, we're probably going to have some issues if spring is here early, this thing might take, the grass might take off, and then we'll be behind the eight ball already. So that's the only downside on this whole bidding.
The bids, the bids say that the total is 25 times the individual cut.
Yes. We rate it, each group is rated how many times we want to cut it for the season, with the option of adding more if we need them.
Okay, but what if there's a drought and they only need to do 20 instead of 25?
We only pay for what they do.
Only for what they do, okay.
So if there is a drought, we'll cut them off and wait for things to start up. And in the same token, sometimes in the spring, depending on how much rain we get, things take off, and then we might have to do it every week instead of every other week. So it's flexible enough, but we needed some basis to establish the baseline on everything.
Okay. I get that some of these went down, but you're saying that the airport went up 50%?
Yeah.
Do we know why?
I don't know why yet. We haven't had a chance to talk to the three bidders as far as, last year we had, last year we had M&amp;M Landscaping, they did not even bid this year. I mean, there are considerations for airports, certainly when their vehicles are out in the fields, nowhere and stuff like that, planes are still landing, so there are some safety concerns that have to be reviewed with the contractors and stuff, but I don't know at this point, we haven't had a chance to talk to everybody.
When our contractors submit a bid, there's, they submit references and everything with that, is all okay? And then, because Morgan Lawn Maintenance, I don't, we've never used them before, as far as I know.
They're a new bidder, and they have to come in lower, substantially lower on some of the items than some of the others that have been bid on a regular basis. So like I said, we have to talk to them a little bit, make sure that, you know, sometimes when these people make mistakes in their calculations or something, so we just want to make sure that everything they submit, it is in fact what they expected or understood requirements are.
Did you ask them for reference when they worked before, that way you know what kind of person, what kind of...
They have to provide references of what, some of their other work.
Okay.
List of the equipment that they have, so we can make sure that they have adequate equipment to do the job. And there's financial requirements also to submit, there's financial information as to how the company...
Doug, did you cover Group Four?
Doug, did you cover Group Four?
No, I did not. Group Four is a, a separate item, we include, it's a boom mower, and that boom mower is an optional item. We have it priced out on a one-week basis. Sometimes, we have some right-ofways that aren't really easily accessible with just pushmowers or riding mowers, so we have that number in there. We've struggled with that a little bit as far as finding contractors that have the capability of providing that service. So it looks like we've got a good bid this time around, so hopefully we'll go utilize that, that contractor.
Any other comment? Okay, we'll list this. Thank you, Doug. Let me see, nineteen is the powwow, and Ron will be here Monday, is that correct?
Ron will be here, Mr. Williams will be here Monday evening if there are any questions, but for, for council's edification, the third annual powwow on Manatoni Creek is scheduled to occur on May the 7th and 8th at Memorial Park. And the group is again asking for permission to occupy the park for the event on the island, and to again camp out from May the 6th to the 9th, to have overnight occupancy at the park as they had done in the past. And Mr. Williams will be here Monday evening.
All right, so it's basically the same event as last year?
Correct.
Okay.
Are they applying for a waiver?
I do not believe, I don't think so. No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I believe they're working directly with Parks and Recreation, and I, I believe that the Borough has some sponsorship issues in this event, which would change the complexity of that.
Okay, so that'll be listed for Monday. Twenty is a Schuylkill River Sojourn.
We received a request again, as in years past, to request permission from the Borough to use Riverfront Park on Tuesday, June the 7th, and then Wednesday morning, June the 8th of this year for the 18th Annual Schuylkill River Sojourn, to have an encampment at Riverfront Park. They've asked for a waiver of the fees in regard to that. I would suggest to you that Parks and Recreation is deeply involved in this event, since I believe on the evening of the 7th will be a screening, correct, of the Pottstown videos. So I believe that we will be able to accommodate them simply through our involvement.
Very good, then we'll list that. Twenty-one, Pottstown Rumble.
A request from the Pottstown Rumble, this is to set up the beer tent at Manatoni Park for their event on June the 24th and 25th, from 12 to 11:30. Obviously, Sly Fox, yeah, I'm sorry, Sly Fox. The Pottstown Rumble would take the responsibility of all the permitting and making sure that it is done in accordance with Pennsylvania Liquor Control Law, and I believe they have an agreement with Sly Fox Brewery and Manatoni Steel Works to help them with that event.
Again, similar as last year.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, we'll list that. Okay, twenty-two, Carousel of Flavor.
Carousel of Flavor is scheduled to occur on High Street, again, as in years past, on Sunday, September the 18th, 2016, from approximately nine o'clock in the morning till six o'clock in the evening. They are asking for a street closure of High Street between Hanover Street and York Street for the purpose of conducting the event.
Another repeat of list.
It's my understanding they will also be having a beer tent in the request, as in the past, the beer tent.
Okay. No questions, no comments, we'll list that for Monday. Twenty-three, Board Vacancies.
I believe you have on your agenda the positions that are available, the Construction Code Board of Appeals. We have two vacancies and one vacancy for an alternate. The EAC currently has four vacancies, and Harb has one vacancy.
Okay, and have we any volunteers or nominations?
To date, I do not believe we have any.
Okay. So get you to be, go out and beat your wards and get all the ideas.
I am, I'm gonna, I didn't have a chance to email Kurt yet, but I am gonna email him and see if he has any interest in, and Ginny had sent me some very detailed information on the EAC, so.
All right, these are the openings. Everybody wants to comment, everybody wants to do something. Here's your opportunity. Okay, and we have time now for comments from our citizens that are present.
Sheila Dugan.
Just very quickly, I wanted to take a minute to give a shout out to the school district, though my children were not at all involved in the WIZ. We all did go see it, and it really was a phenomenal show. And for our kids who get a bad rap constantly, this is just one testament to how good it really was. So I would like to shout out that, and very quickly, I'd like to shout out about the 5K Run, that is our fundraiser for PDA. We have Michael Krop coming to sing, we have several of the local restaurants, we have food trucks coming, so please jump from the interested part of the Facebook page to the going-to-the-part of the Facebook page, and that'll be really successful. This will all go to support things like getting the leaves cleaned up in the fall and things that our budget just doesn't really have money for. So I would like to invite everybody to that on May 15th.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Also sign in, we're Diana Rivera, Robert Watson, and Luvina Lister. I believe they spoke, their topic is the HR Commission, so I'm gonna assume they have, they have left.
Okay.
That is the extent of public comment.
That is signed. Is there anybody else that would like to comment at this time? Seeing none. Counselors, general discussion. Mr. Kirkland?
Nothing.
Nothing? Ms. Pez?
Nothing.
Mr. Arms?
Just wanted to say, the groundbreaking for Facera's project is happening Friday. Really excited about that, and thanks to Genesis for all of their work in the community the past few years.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd really see the, how that's progressing over there, even though the groundbreaking's on Friday, I mean, they've done quite a bit.
We'll, we'll see you there?
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Shovel in a hard ass.
Okay, including the destruction of, or the 173, 175 North Evans, although they were supposed to do it on a Friday. I would check every hour to see if they're doing it, but I guess they did it on Saturday, and I was at a childbirth class, I missed it, it was disappointing, but.
His call? Nothing. Mr. Miller?
Of course.
Of course.
I want to remind everyone that the, the home buying seminar for first responders is on April 2nd at the Phillies Fire Company. It's gonna be done in two sessions from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., so we're, we're specifically targeting first responders. That's police, firefighters, EMT. Mr. Kirkland will be there, so I hope to see other members of the community come out and support. On Monday nights, we now have a new category under committee reports, which is emergency services, that will allow the fire companies to come forward and give their reports without being a citizen. They are now part of a, an organization where they're not held to their three minutes. So Mr. Pierce comes out every month, and so I'm hoping and expecting the other companies to, to do so as well. And then, one last thing, we do now have representatives for all, from all four fire companies for our Community Collaborative Fire Committee. I'll be sending the email out this week to schedule that, and it'll probably be closer to the end of March for our first meeting.
Good. Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few more points about this thing with the Human Relations Commission, that my position is one of complete objectivity. It's not based on the need or not the need, but the actual reality that we are in a cyber age, and the constraints and liabilities we're trying to reduce for the Borough. That is the, really the main thrust behind all of this. And Mrs. Rivera O'Brien, being the staff person, is not really the subject of what I'm discussing. It's really the fact that the ordinance and the affect is antiquated in today's society, because anyone can sit down and have an advocacy, advocacy discussion on behalf of any other party and find a resolution. I'd just like to mention an elder fraud case that existed during my first term, where I did have my hands on the issue, and encouraged this woman, it was a housing issue, to seek other levels of government where people have more influence, power, et cetera. She took her issue to every level of government, up to the governor at that time, state attorney general's office, senators on both sides of the aisle, all sides of the aisle, and there was complete inaction. She was abused elderly, defrauded of money, evicted unwarrantedly, and, you know, there were just a lot of issues with this that were not facilitated by any commission, board, or level of government. So these are the type of issues that need not only objectivity, but, you know, we really don't want to just sit around and highlight all the problems, you know? I have, do have a troubleshooter nature, but this isn't the place where I'm gonna sit and case-by-case point out the reasons why I feel this is a prudent issue. But I can say that I sit here on behalf of an entire community, which includes elderly and disenfranchised people that will never have a need of the Human Relations Commission per se, but nevertheless have advocates, such as the homeless, for example. Thank you.
Thank you. As for me, last Friday night, I was at the opening of the WIZ, and it was fantastic. You can say all you want about Pottstown, you know, everybody complains, we don't have this, we don't have that. Well, we certainly have talent at the high school, and it, it was at its best. Shame we can't broadcast all of it to the world. Part Two, if you're gonna be getting up early tomorrow and complaining about your commute down 422 to Norristown, King of Precious, Philadelphia, New Jersey, then be my guest. Go in and see your employer, say, I'm tired of this, I come in, I'm tired, I'm wrecked, I, I don't like my job because of the commute, why don't you consider moving to Pottstown? We have places, we have opportunity, we even have theatrical talent at our high school. But please invite your employer to move out here, call the Borough Hall, call me, and we'll do our best to get them relocated, so your commute is cut to, what, 10, 15 minutes?
Will there be an executive session?
Okay, and the topic is?
Collective bargaining, one item, and we do not anticipate coming back to take any action.
Okay, and just a note for the regular meeting, we'll also be discussing the donation bid ordinance. Meeting adjourned.